Please see the agenda.
Evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's regular scheduled City Council meeting. We commence at 6:03. The clerk, please call the hall.
Counselor Perry?
Present.
Counselor LaFasta?
Present.
Counselor Figueroa?
Present.
Counselor Juan Fonseca? Counselor Ray?
Present.
Counselor Rivera?
Present.
Counselor Masora?
Present.
Yeah, Congress.
Thank you. Call's being provided for the political reasons.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands in one nation, under God, and is with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to have a moment of silence for the young man that was asked to wave a Christian Giovanni Cortez. A moment of silence. He was a worker there at the recreation department in the summer. Thank you very much. Madam clerk?
The president would like to announce the changes of the agenda now?
Yes. Without objection, I permit that we have some changes in this evening's agenda, and the city clerk will now give the changes.
For our other comments, we are going to hear items 7A, all of items 7I, then 7C, and we'll move item 4 to the before item 11. So the first one, all the titles, will be moved to the right. Do you have any comments, the president?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry, it's called a so-called record, it's called a record.
No, I'm sorry.
From the records, it's called before, huh?
Good.
spoken well.
Do you have any other comments, the president?
Go ahead.
First, the Central Falls, the yellow.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Seth Colter. I'm a teacher at the high school and I'm excited that there's some students here that need to learn, just wanted to talk a little bit about a project we're taking on.
Hi, I'm Dr. Warner.
I'm Zeddy.
My name is Shelly.
My name is Ray Lee Bogans. And we all attend the extended learning opportunity, How to Change the World, at Central Falls High School. How to Change the World is an extended learning opportunity, which is basically an active class that we take on our own time that teaches us how and gives us a basic idea on how we want to change the world in our own way. We learn about activism and fundraising and things like that. And recently, locally, we've been working, we've been meeting public leaders, congressmen, local business owners, bank workers and things like that, who all knew activist work of various types and changed the world in their own ways. But soon, we have something bigger coming up that will generally, or not, that will...
Okay, so what we've kind of doing is going on a, on April break, we've kind of going on a trip to DC and we'll go on bus and there we will see a lot of things like museums and universities and Congress. And we also plan, we will stay at homestay in DC with homestays with yogurt and stuff, and yeah, and we, and we need your help.
You are all invited on Fridays at 7AM at Navigant where more serious topics about this course, books about information and we can talk to you later.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, best of luck. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Dear Mr. Seagull?
Thank you.
Good evening, counsel. Counselor Reddick?
Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, I just have a question, that's all. I know, I'm loud. Don't you allow me in? Uh, just a couple of questions on tonight's agenda. Um, I have reached out to a couple of council people, but I haven't heard back. Regarding the McCannan Center that you have on the agenda, the only documentation I had is a copy of an agreement between possible tenants and the McCannan Center, but I'd like to see the agreement between the city and the McCannan Center. If anybody has that, Counselor Rivera, Counselor Juan Fonseca, Mr. Lazea, all represent me in the city and, like I said, I reached out. I haven't reached out yet. No, no, not yet, not yet. I know you didn't. Uh, but if you have information about that, it wasn't, it wasn't made public as of yet, so if you have that, that would be great. Um, also, a breakdown of funding. Um, when I was on the council, it was discussed, the project was discussed, and we were looking at over a million dollars, of which we did not have complete funding from outside sources, so I'd like to make sure that if there were any tax dollars, federal, state, or local, being used for this project, if you could get that information, we appreciate it. Thank you, appreciate it. Um, and also regarding the Dexter Credit, the former Dexter Credit Union project, um, I've not seen, not, not only not seen, but not heard anything regarding that project other than it was, was in the newspaper and they were contradicting, like articles, one talked about getting a hundred thousand, one talked about a million. So if we could get some information about that, maybe a presentation to the public, presentation to the council, that would be fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Jean Morris?
Nothing to say too much, my guy. I see the picture of the wall, so I'm glad it goes to the left of mine. I think I was getting some help on it. You'll have any trouble, we'll just take care of it. But some needs are on, I don't know, yeah. I have other issues, but I'll wait till another time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
Lorraine Savard?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Lorraine Savard. I live in 76 Ember Street. Um, and I have two, two things I'd like to share with the council or ask the council. Um, I live on Ember Street and it's on top of the hill, and down below I have Higgins Park, Widde Higgins, the machine shop, and their building across the street on Higgins Avenue, I believe, a truck terminal. My husband used to work at the truck terminal, and it's loud, and I was wondering what these ordinances, I know I was here for the noise ordinance for the city, but that was for parties. This was not for a, a truck terminal, so, um, anyone have any answers? No? No? I, I may have looked the wrong place.
Excuse me, do you mean law, law packaging?
Yes.
During the process?
Yes, yes.
I believe it's a warehouse. Uh, now whether trucks will be, obviously trucks will be back, but that is the industrial area.
Yes, but I, as an abuser, I mean, I'm more than whatever the regulation is for an abuser, but I'm concerned not only for myself, but for the entire Ember Street, and it's really developed now, all right? Now, I do not want to be labeled as against labor. You know, I'm just worried about noise, noise. Okay, that was one thing. Another thing that I'd like to say is last year, I was here with a contingent from Barreville, and we asked the council, and the council did, write an ordinance opposing the Barreville Fracked Gas Power Plant. Since then, thirty-two other cities and towns in Rhode Island have come on board. And the other day, December, maybe it was November, at the, what is called the Energy Facility Signing Board, the applicant, which is the person building this plant, asked this board not to consider the resolutions, the thirty-two, there were thirty-something, thirty-seven total, there was some Connecticut, um, to, to put it at a level of public comment. Now, I don't know, maybe the solicitor can help me out here. If your resolution is considered a public comment, does that not have weight? I don't know. But I'm concerned that not only did I come here and Barrevillians came, not only here, but thirty-two other cities and towns, and all of their resolutions opposing this are put to aside, I guess. So I just wanted to let the council know about that, and if there was any, um, now, can you help me about the noise? Shall I ask my neighbors to realize, or, I don't know, look down to the builders and ask? Are there...
Are you, are you hearing noise now?
Well, they're building.
They're in the process of building.
Yes.
Not done, that's the construction.
I understand that.
Probably.
When it's operational, that's a, that's a loud noise happening these. I, I've never lived near one, but my husband worked at one, and they were always getting complaints and police coming because of the noise, so I just want, yes?
I believe that's an expansion at Widde Hig- excuse me, Widde Higgins?
No, it's across the street, unless it's the same place.
You're hearing it from packaging and more?
Yeah, they're building an extension to their existing place, and it's going to be a warehouse, and they're building it, and I don't...
So we should have plans in file, and I can talk to the planning director tomorrow, or email you, we have a file.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, all right.
Counselor Hay?
Thank you very much. My name is Thomas Lazea, 1072 Alonzo Lane, you're Central Falls. I am speaking under the public comments because I cannot get all my comments expressed at a council meeting. So I wish to express my regrets to some of my constituents for not being able to act on your request, your petitions to place things on the agenda, or other requests. I am working on that, and I will try to comply with those requests as soon as I can. I have also requested, and I do request, that a public hearing be held for the annual audit and public comments be allowed. We did not have a public meeting to allow comments or questions from the city council regarding last year's audit. I wish to publicly request that we have a time period set aside for the annual audit report, questions by the council, and also questions by the public. I make an informal request. I've also asked that what should be on the agenda, and I've requested to be on the agenda in the past, be on the agenda in the future, and that's new business. There are items that a council member may bring up under new business that is not being allowed at this point, and I request that a new business be included on the agenda, so members of the council can add items that are not being discussed or that they, that have been requested by their constituents. Uh, I've also requested, and I do again, that, and I know in two weeks from tonight, there is a council meeting regarding the financial staff that's being requested by the city council. Uh, that will take place two weeks from tonight. Uh, I request that that be an open meeting, meaning that the council and also the public are able to ask questions and to get pertinent information that they deem necessary. Uh, these are requests that I've asked in the past, and I wanted to publicly request that here under public comments. Uh, there are many other things that I'm sure we will be discussing. I will be discussing many other items on the agenda, especially the minutes. I am, uh, I objected to the minutes over the last year because they do not fully uh, comply with the discussions that take place at the meeting. The questions by the council, the answers by the members that are here are excluded. And I respectfully request that they be included in all minutes. These, this is a request that I will make later. It's a request that I've made continually for the last year, and I hope, I wish that it's complied with. I apologize again to my constituents not being able to comply with the, these requests that I've, that I've asked the council, but hopefully in the near future, they can be complied with. Thank you very much.
For Julio Tómez?
What's up? Sorry. I'm sorry, I'm playing for the moment. Um, I'm part of an organization, I'm a black woman pastor. We basically focus on, well, she can say more about the affection I have.
The youth programs that we have to grant through the department account, um, with the youth, we are looking at the items that are sold in the stores. As you know, we have a ban on flavored tobacco products, and we just completed a survey in December which alerted us to some flavored tobacco products that are being sold that are not legal and some other items that, um, would cause, uh, who else, who else?
So, as you're, we do go for banning flavored tobacco, but as you see, this one is not marked as flavored, but when you open it, it does smell like banana, if you dare pour it, you open it, smell yourself. So, I'm going to leave it this way. Where is this place?
Right, he's a little nervous, sorry. My little helper here is not cooperating. So the concern is that there's some, there's new items that are coming out that are flavored, that are marked. Um, when we went through, we did the, we looked through, and we did alert our retailers to this. We also used...
Do you want me to take some little one? Will she come to me? No, I'm so sorry. I'll take this for you. Come on, come on, come, you want some water? Come, 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 come.
Thank you. We did the retailer's educational toolkit with each retailer that we would help to. Um, we have it in black and white, but I think it's best to show it in color, and we can send this around. Um, I did send this, I believe, to the president, and we can send it around to everyone. As the youth went through and surveyed the store and we spoke, um, we also went through the retailer education toolkit. We did it. I went out and did it twice, so there would be no confusion. I had conversations with the retailers, lovely conversations. You know, I understand that the people that is selling the tobacco products to them are really misleading them, so, you know, we went out, it was a friendly conversation, and, um, this is the new stuff that's on the market. So this is new as well.
And now, now they're just flavoring.
Yeah. So these are the concerns now, and as we were educated with the new training, I tried to do the education with the retailers because we don't want them to get in any trouble for selling products that are not legal. So we did do the training, the retailer's education. All of them are going to get a certificate for participating in the retailer education. We wanted to do a reception. We were waiting for the, um, other piece of the compliance test to see who passed and, you know, um, to kind of honor those that were really following the local policy changes. So again, all of this was done in December, and I even have receipts to, um, January 20th. I went back to the source after doing the friendly education and retailer's training. Um, I have a receipt here of my January 20th where the tobacco products are still being on the shop, so just wanted to bring that to your attention. And also something we brought, um, you know, that's...
Now, as you can see, this is, uh, called as tobacco, um, a tobacco, but tobacco, what's one?
It's a gas mask, but supposedly you're gonna smoke tobacco, and this is what's in us. So we just wanted you to see that. Like, you're gonna purchase tobacco and put tobacco in there and smoke it. We just wanted to, um, send that around.
Now, this is one of the, uh, most, like, most famous things we have, which is called logic. Now, one of these little things are purity, and not only is it bad if you're naked, but it also, one of the little things actually sounds as four pack of cigarettes, as we all know, cigarettes are bad. We have, and like us, we're trying to hate people, you know, our youth, our future, right? So since that's, that's that, we, um, we're trying to be actually better, right? Or what?
Well, we're having conversations.
We're having conversations about...
That hope, yes.
... Now, we will also have this around, so you can see, they use this, on top, which is, which is like here, that one of these little tubes, it actually goes four pack of cigarettes, and I'll change around to you and see.
Um, we have, um, from our sister communities in South Kingston, youth have told us that youth are using these and their laptops, if they think it's a baby, not, yeah, but they're using these in school. The teachers can't tell for the simple fact that you can't, you can't see it. They're just inhaling it and vaping, and that's pure drug addiction, which can really be... So we just want to share and let you know what we're up to. We, we're short in numbers today because we have a group of youth doing a Black History program at RIT, and we have some of the intended, let me see, the...
Thank you very, why are you up there? I want to thank you. Uh, I want to thank Detective Sarah McNulty, Lieutenant Reed, and Detective Bogans for their work with the flavored tobacco. We do have the report, and we're gonna act on the report tonight of your findings. So again, I want to thank you, uh, the two detectives and Lieutenant Reed for their work. General, thank them, uh, for this here. Thank you. We have, and we, we have your report, and it's very thorough, and thank you so much for those efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you guys can, you can't take a soul.
Well, you know, if you smoke tobacco.
Next, I am the president, in the section of the Central Falls City Council, uh, from Steven Young, Ryan Bradley, and Andres Mina, the Central Falls Fire Department, in recognition of their honorable and helpful acts on January 28, 2018, and Chief Bradley, actually.
Good evening, councilors. I'm here tonight to help you recognize three members of our fire department. On Sunday, January 28th, the firefighters before you that just transported a nine-month-old little girl that was very sick and was having extreme difficulty breathing to Hasbro Children's Hospital in Providence. What happened after they brought that little girl to the Hasbro is what gives me goosebumps every time I hear. Firefighters usually recognize what people like to call superhuman feats of bravery. What these three men did is the true essence of what being a human being is all about, and why the brotherhood of firefighters is such an amazing group to be a part of. I'd like to read to you a letter that was sent to me by Chief James McLaughlin of the Warwick Fire Department, which was sent by one of his rescue lieutenants, which pretty much describes what happened that day. Says, "Dear Chief, Hello, my name is Private Christopher Zaneo of the Warwick Fire Department. The intent of this email is to thank you as well as the members of your department. These men assisted myself and my fellow Warwick Fire Department members on a run that occurred on January 28, 2018, around 10 o'clock in the morning. The nature of the call was a two-month-old that was not breathing with CPR in progress. This scene continued upon our arrival at Hasbro ER. As we pulled up, I could see out of the back window a member of a different fire department which was now Warwick, standing on the ramp of the ER. It appeared as though he was waiting for our arrival. For some reason, unbeknownst to me, upon stopping the rescue, our doors opened and the individual that was standing on the ramp jumped in and started assisting us in a way that we needed. The individual got moved into the rotation of CPR on the two-month-old little boy without hesitation. After moving the patient into the ER, we all stood there next to each other and watched silently as the doctors and staff worked vigorously to save this child's life. Unfortunately, they were not successful. You would have thought that this person was a member of our department by the way he jumped into our rescue, although the reality was that he did not know any of us or what was happening behind those doors. As I walked out of the ER and went to talk to my crew, I noticed now that there were two people from your department in the back of the rescue with my members who were on the call. Would needless to say, we're not taking it very well. I sat and listened as your men talked and consulted my crew. I was taken back that these guys would not only assist us in the run, but now they're taking it one step further to sit and talk with us, offering anything and everything they had. But really, they knew that we just needed someone to listen and maybe a shoulder to lean on at that moment in time. To me, these men are truly what the fire service is and needs. They have a true definition of integrity. I would like to thank them for what they did that day. You should be so proud to know that these are the type of people that serve your city. The one name I was able to get was Steve Young. If you could pass this along to him and his partners that day, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you for you and your time, and I look forward to an opportunity... Thank you for you and your time, and I look forward to an opportunity where our departments get to work together in the future." The three firefighters that were on that call that day, Private Steven Young, Private Andres Nunez, Private Ryan Bradley. Private Ryan Bradley. Private Steven Young. Private Andres Nunez.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Chief.
My assignment is, um, hearing consideration of the lease for the McKenna Center for Teaching, Vowing, and Research, 1511 St.
I think I even have to recuse. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Lieutenant Capedon, Superintendent Solsen, Central Falls School District. And I'm here today to speak on behalf of this resolution for the McKenna Center, um, housed at 115 in Illinois. The school department has been partnering with the city and mayor's office to begin to look at how we can take this blighted house and turn it into a state-of-the-art center for our community. We've been working with the city now for uh, close to three years in making sure that this uh, can become a reality. Uh, we were able to look at the McKenna Center as an opportunity to take a house that really sat across the street from the high school. And what we thought was that every single day that our students came out of their high school, they had to face this house across the street that did not espouse the kinds of values and kind of learning they were doing inside of the school. Uh, we were grateful to receive an initial donation from Margaret McKenna, who on behalf of her parents and her aunt, provided us with some of the startup money to be able to begin this dream of a McKenna Center. Um, her parents and her aunt were teachers, um, and educators in Central Falls. Her aunt was actually, um, an educator in Central Falls for close to 50 years. So, she made an initial donation that allowed us to begin this um, dream of looking at this house becoming one day a building where we can house a state-of-the-art tutoring center. At this point, we have been working with the city and we are ready as a school department to be able to take care and control of the building. Our board of trustees have reviewed the uh, the proposal and just as we have with any of the other school buildings, we are ready to have the property transferred to us. Part of what we will do with the property is to create a tutoring center that will be housed on the first floor of the McKenna Center. And really, that will operate in the after-school hours from 3:00 to 7:00 PM. The tutoring center will be one where the students can come in and receive support from graduate students, from college students, or from some of our own teachers. During the day, it will be an opportunity for our teachers to have their dual enrollment classes or a professional development center in where teachers can come and learn new best practices from each other or from our partners at the university level. So, the goal is to build a college-going culture, to really have the McKenna Center um, follow a model that we looked at in Boston, Massachusetts, the MACH program. Um, and the upstairs of the McKenna Center would still function as a residence. And so, what we wanna do is to have what we call tutors in residence. Uh, these tutors will live at the McKenna Center and then in the evening, um, on Saturdays, they will provide some of the services, tutoring and other support services to our students. We have, um, we will have a house manager that will also live in the McKenna Center. But really, um, we are excited because this provides us with an opportunity to not only have a house that was, um, a blighted house in the city, now becomes one of the jewels of the city by having a newly renovated center that can become a state-of-the-art tutoring and professional development center for our students and our staff. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, the students, the tutors that will be housed in there? The tutors that will be housed in there, they won't be paying rent? It will be in lieu of the services they will be providing?
The students will have a, the tutors, they will have a minimal obligation to the house, but part of the um, arrangements is that their services will also be in lieu of rent as accommodation.
Yes, um, for, how long is that place gonna be open during the day? How many hours and how many days a week is that gonna be open?
Our proposal at this time is that we will open the center at 7:00 AM and it'll run to 7:00 PM. So, during the school hours, it will be for teachers to either come over with their classes, um, to have professional development. And then after school, at 3:00, it will open as a tutoring center from 3:00 to 7:00. We're also looking at being able to open from 9:00 to 1:00 on Saturdays.
Definitely is a great idea when we wanna have a center like this to be tutoring our students, to make them more efficient, taught them in more successful life. And I definitely very agree with that and I would like to make a motion to.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Make a motion as for approval of the lease.
Mr. Chairman, it's a public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
It's for approval of the lease.
This is, it's a public discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Are you speaking now?
I wish to speak and I want other people in the public one to speak if they wish to. This is what a public discussion is. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Superintendent, how are you? This is a, a long coming project, I know. I've been asked by constituents of mine more details, financial details that people are concerned about at states and here. And I've only just received a lease agreement within the last 10, 15 minutes. So, haven't really had time to look that over. But the, the educational aspect of it, uh, I'm not as greatly concerned as, as a council member, the city's interest and the city's liability in the future. Uh, this states that the city raised or expended $1.6 million on the refurbishment, the purchase and refurbishment of that property. Um, I've requested a detailed breakdown on the expenses of this property. I still have it, is that the final figure? Uh, what is the breakdown of grants? We were told originally years ago that uh, uh, the entrepreneur, Bill and Melinda Gates, uh, were initiating this project with the city and expending a great deal of funds to cover the cost. What I found out later is that there wasn't enough money that they were providing and that they had to go to other sources. How much?
Sorry, I just wanted to, um, yeah, I just wanted to go ahead and jump in. Um, it was actually, this, this project was actually started with a phone call from Margaret McKenna. Um, it was not initiated by the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, although they have been a part of it subsequently after this deal was agreed upon. Um, and the AFO, anticipating this sort of conversation would come up, the AFO sent down, uh, sent out a, a memo to all of the council members, which I, I hope you all received.
No, I have never received it.
Have you checked your email?
Uh, I have checked my personal email, it's not there. I have not received it.
Okay, there was a memo that was sent by the AFO, um, to the council members with a breakdown. Uh, I can't speak on each of the items as to, um, you know, some were grants, some were, uh, stock transfers, reimbursements, things of that nature. I don't know the specifics on each of them. Uh, but we have raised over $1.6 million with all of that together. And so, uh, both Len and Derek have been, Derek are a fund developer, have been working together, um, to raise money. Well, primarily Derek, but have worked together to send out that memo to you. I'm sure they'd be happy to explain more of the specifics of the funding to you.
I'd be happy to, since I have not received it as of yet.
I, you should have.
If they have to explain, I know I've been questioned on it by constituents and I said I will ask questions at the meeting, but I have not received anything further than this lease agreement a couple of minutes ago in the house.
Yes, understood. You should have received that email. Um, if you'd like, we'll be more than happy to set up a meeting with you and Derek and Len and to read you all of the financial items if you'd like.
I'll be happy to receive and review it. In lieu of that, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to defer it until we receive all the documentation to review and to discuss it.
We, we presently have a motion on the floor to approve the lease. I'm looking for a second. Excuse me, you interrupted before the second.
Correct.
We have a second vice-cumpliment, Rivera.
Now.
Now, under discussion, again. That's the proper way, Mr. Lozera.
No, the proper way, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lozera, we're under discussion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I support the use of the property. Uh, but in, as a councilman, uh, I must question financial aspects of it, question the long-term $1 lease annually of this, what are the liabilities? What are, oh, excuse me, when I'm ready, you can answer the question.
Absolutely.
Yeah, these are all the questions that I have, but I received phone calls today regarding this, regarding what are the details? What are the financial aspects of it? What are the, what, did you see the lease? Says, "No, I didn't get a copy of the lease." Uh, didn't receive anything further. So, with that, uh, as I said, I support the project. The McKennys were teachers of mine. I respect them greatly. I know them, I knew them very well. I know the daughter. Uh, she was president of Suffolk University. I'm very familiar with the entire McKenna family and I think it's a, uh, it's a tribute to their family for what they are doing. But in all due diligence, these are questions that do not come before a meeting of this for a major project like this worth a million and a half dollars, a long-term lease, when we don't receive the material. Now, as I stated, you could present the materials, you can discuss the materials. I know there were people here in the audience that may wanna ask questions. This is a public discussion because we're expending funds. And that's something that according to our rules and regulations is the proper way of doing things. So, do you have any financial aspects and information that you could relay and answer any other questions of the public?
Thank you, councilor. One of the things that I wanna just, um, state, in terms of any questions that you may have in regards to the programmatic, in terms of the, um, what the schools intend to do when we receive the property, I'm more than ready to answer any of those questions as far as any of the financials or any of the transactions. Um, then you're going, I'm going to refer to, um, this.
Right, and so Len had sent out that memo. I believe he sent it to the email that was assigned to you. If you don't check it, that is another story. Um, I don't wanna go into detail about the specifics of each of the financial items because I, I don't know, um, the timeline, each of them are, are, are different. Um, as I mentioned, there's different contributions that have come in place and I am sure that, um, Len and Derek and anyone, um, responsible for the fundraising of the project and the financials of the project would be happy to speak with you and any other of the council members. But what you have today is a lease agreement between the city and the school. And the lease agreement would be, uh, and the city solicitor, correct me if I'm wrong, it would follow pretty much the same construct or the exact same construct of what we have for our other school buildings.
That is correct pursuant to the 1999, 1991 statute. This lease agreement would put 115 Illinois in the same legal position in the care, custody, and control of the school department. They're responsible for utilities, they're responsible for liability, et cetera, as every other school.
Mr. Slaughter, the schools presently are, are owned by the city. All schools during the takeover, which I initiated in the 90s, the city maintains ownership and provides the use to the schools for the general maintenance. We take care of any capital improvements. This project, uh, how does that differ or how does that is, how is that similar?
This agreement puts 115 Illinois in the same legal standing as every other school building. So, the city owns it, but the school department possesses and has it under its care, custody, and control, which is the same legal structure as every other elementary, middle, or high school in the city.
I'll defer any questions.
Just in the interest of time and me being sick and my patients, uh, for transparency sake, uh, I'll read out the memo. There's $1.675 million that funding came from Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, which was a quarter million, Central Falls School Department, which is $375,000. An individual donor who chose to remain private, which is $100,000. John and Sandy McCullough, $10,000. Navigating Credit Union, $50,000. Protecta Credit Union, $35,000. Providence Journal Legacy Charitable Fund, $25,000. Rhode Island College, $30,000. State of Rhode Island, $600,000. Chamber of Foundation, $200,000. None of that was from the city. Um, my question related to utilities, Superintendent, is that the lease between the city and the school department states that the leasing will pay utilities, the lease between the house manager agreement states that the utilities are free of charge for the house manager. Does that mean that the utility become a line item for the school department?
Yes, we will treat this building as any other school, um, building. So, we pay the utilities insurance, um, for the entire building.
Cool. Um, my question for the solicitor is, based on the lease agreement, it states that there'll be an automatic renewal, uh, that expires annually, um, and then again renewed automatically unless a written termination provided by either party 30 days before the renewal date. Um, does that mean there's one shot every year after to renew?
That's correct.
All right, the reason why I ask that is in case that we would wanna sell the property in order to use money to buy a new building or to make improvements to another building. I just want that to be clear for everybody. Thank you.
Any more?
Mr. Chairman, I can ask the Slaughter again. The, is it my understanding that the general repairs and maintenance and any other necessary construction would be a cost borne by the school department?
That's correct. Part of, I'm sorry. Part of the, uh, the need to carefully craft this to be in a similar legal position like other school buildings is it allows the city and the school district to potentially, if we need down the future to petition, the state school construction agency for any capital repairs, which give the city, I think, at a 97% reimbursement rate.
It will come in.
Correct.
Mr.? Mr. Superintendent, the, the facility itself, you can look for the details. What exactly is the building going to be used for? Uh, you are going to be having tutors living there. How many, uh, is the building available for review, for viewing? I've never seen the inside, what was done? How many rooms are there? How many people will be living here? Uh, is there classroom space? Is there other particular, uh, details in the building that we should be familiar? with, the city is liable to anybody that goes in there, any students, anybody living there, those all I'm sure are going to be covered under interlocal trust, but if you can give a few more details on this?
Sure, I can step into that. In regards to the building, the first floor consists of, if you want to think of it as an old Victorian home, a double parlor, a dining room, and a kitchen area. And so what that gives us is four distinct spaces for classrooms, some of which can be combined. And so the way that we built out the space is to offer flexibility where downstairs you can have spaces for individual tutoring sessions, group tutoring sessions, while there's an area where a workshop can be going on, and then the back, which will have been the kitchen of the house, has now become a computer hub. And so all of that has been hooked up so that students can go in with their laptops, and we also have a laptop cart available. The way that we're configuring the first floor is to have flexible furniture so that during the day, if a class was to go from the high school to the McKenna Center and be meeting with another class or a classroom in a college, you arrive or any other place, the space can be configured, the furniture can then be broken up and recreated into the tutoring center, so a lot of flexible spaces, but basically four distinct spaces downstairs. Upstairs, we have five bedrooms.
On the two floors.
On the two floors, yeah, there's two on the second floor and three on the third floor. There is a called kitchen on the second floor, and a kitchenette on the third floor. The second floor is, the first and second floor are handicap accessible, there is an elevator that has been built in, so that the first and second floor are fully handicapped accessible. Each of the two floors at the top, like I said, five bedrooms, and then there'll be some common spaces, so I'd say the kitchenette and a living area that can be shared. The basement is a basement that can be used for storage at this time, so that's really the facilities. In terms of your question to, if you can, the building that's still part of the city, so anytime we can arrange that. Like I said, when it becomes part of the school, what we do plan to have is an opening to make sure that we have some kind of ribbon cutting, we'll have tours, we want everyone to sort of be able to feel that this is enough, a place where they can participate in. So we'll definitely make that available.
I just have three short questions. One is, what are the fire code requirements, because it is a school, is it, I'm sure it must be complied with. Secondly, the bathroom facilities for the second, third floor, what do they comprise? And lastly, is available parking?
So in terms of the fire codes or any other codes for the first floor, it is a school building, same thing with the insurance, we have already received the appraisals and everything that we need to on our end to have that go into the school's portfolio. In terms of the bathrooms, there are bathrooms on the second floor, that one gets really handicap accessible, consists of a toilet, a sink, and a shower, same thing on the third floor, toilet, sink, and a shower, and there is a bathroom downstairs that consists of a toilet and a sink for the school use.
On the first floor?
On the first floor.
And parking?
Parking will be either in the street parking, or there's also the park that is just down the street from 115, which is a city-owned lot.
There's no on-site parking?
There is no on-site parking.
Yeah, like I just asked the fire chief regarding the meeting of the fire codes, what was required?
Our fire codes have been very extensive, we've been involved since the very beginning, going over plans, there was a thorough plan review that was performed, and codes are 100% what they need to be according to the state fire codes.
Is this a system direct to the fire department?
I, yes, I referred to my prior long superintendent in the back, it is fully sprinkled, it is directly related to the fire department, so if anything is to happen, the fire department will have it right now.
Thank you.
The other thing just to add, and we have secured that the first floor is accessible by school staff, the second and third floor are not accessible unless you have a specific code to be able to get up to the second and third floor. Students will never be, our high school or middle or elementary school students will never be allowed on the second and third floor.
I'm only concerned with liability.
Thank you. Roll call, will?
I just have one question.
Yes.
I just have one question.
I have one question.
You have a question, Elaine?
Yes. I read somewhere, heard something, that not only will there be tutors living there, but also possibly teachers from the school, is that so?
Yes, I mentioned, these residents, tutors, can be graduate students, college students, and also any other teachers or staff of the school department.
And only five? That's too bad, maybe more than five.
Thank you, continue with the roll.
Counselor Costa? I have a question on finances.
Public president.
This isn't a public hearing, just to turn it out.
It is a public hearing when you're expending funds.
Not a public hearing, look at your council.
Not on the agenda, Tom.
And we should defer it until we have a public hearing, Mr. Chairman, because we are signing a lease, expending funds for property, that requires a public hearing.
Counselor Costa?
Yes.
Counselor Lozier?
I think we are out of order, I cannot support it at this time, it should be deferred.
Is Elliot here?
No.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Solima?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, thank you. Yeah, we also, at this time, say public words first, and then we want to get to the police reports on the tobacco, because Detective is now certainly on duty, so we want to get to that also.
So the next one is, public hearing request for public consent for entitlement on City Central Falls, year 14 RI UBS MS4 report, as required by the Rhode Island Department of Department of Municipal Ministry.
Good evening, my name is Elaine Potruch, and I'm the Public Works and Code Enforcement Director for the City of Central Falls. Every year for the last 14 years, all the cities and towns in Rhode Island that have small municipal separate stormwater sewer system have to file a report with DM to track the progress of compliance for pollution of storm drains. One of the requirements of this report is to hold a public hearing, and that is why it is before you. In this report, the city explains what it is doing to prevent pollution from entering the storm drains. This year, the report contains information on the following: public involvement and participation in community cleanups held by the city and other special interest groups; public education and outreach, pollution prevention and good housekeeping, including the scheduling and cleaning of storm drains and inspections of sewer manholes; and what it is doing to prevent pollution and control stormwater runoff.
Anyone in the public wish to speak on what's before us here regarding these surge? Thank you for the work you've done, many pages, I glanced through it a number of times, I was surprised at some of the things, I didn't know that the center of the city was a high point, and that we're lucky that we have natural drainage, that's great. Anyone else look at the report, that's a long report today.
I just have one question, Ms. Potruch, thank you for the report and all your work. I noticed that we were only able to get to about 8% in terms of inspecting our catch basins and manholes, is that a, is that a normal figure that we're able to get to, or is it just really hard to get to, or do we expect to look at the rest of them sometime soon?
What happened was, we actually went through all 484 in the last three years, and so we've started over. Unfortunately, this year, we ran into some problems with other projects we were involved in, so normally we can clean 75 to 100 per season.
But so just, so you have got through all of them in the last three days?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Lozier.
Good evening, Elaine, I'm familiar with this, is there any plans to upgrade any catch basins in the next year or so?
We've actually repaired quite a few, as we find them, we repair them. Where, for example, we just had one that we had to repair at Madeira and Broad, in the snowstorm apparently, it collapsed, and as this happens, we do repair them.
Do you know the plans for any further outreach and construction for the Narragansett Sewer District? They were coming up more along the Blackstone, I don't remember the timetable, is there something coming in the near future?
There is, it's actually still in the planning stages, they're working on, they're doing a lot of background work right now, when that actually happens, I'm not sure, but they are looking at doing different studies.
Do we still have the pumping station at, on the Pigginson Avenue, El Crow Point Road in that area?
I'm not sure, yes, we do, I believe we do. I think they just redid all of that last year, NBC.
Thank you.
Anyone else? We closed the public hearing, and just looking for a motion, I guess, to accept your report, annual report.
Motion to accept.
We have a motion by Councilman Lozier, seconded by Councilman Costa, those who favor the signifier by saying aye. Chair will tie, nay, hearing not seen, and thank you again, it was a lot of work. Thank you. At this time, without objection, Detective, but the dump is on duty, so we want to get to the hearing consideration regarding the flavored tobacco sales, everyone has the report in front of you, there was extensive work done by Detective, and also Vigeria, who was here earlier, and Gertrude Gang, and I thank you very much, thank Detective Reed also, and Detective Bowden for their work. So what we have before us, you found six or seven, I believe, that were in compliance, and there was a few that weren't.
Can you just state your name for the record? She's like a Sarah Hall thing.
Anyone, everyone read the report? There was just one that, I'm trying to figure out, the ABC Liquors, apparently they had the flavored tobacco, but it was in another room.
Yes.
And they were asked to go, like, they come out.
That is correct, our undercover detective went there, inquired about the product, he was told that they do sell it, however, they knew that they weren't supposed to sell it, as our detective go in the back was able to purchase it and enter the building. The second time, with the underage subject that did go out there, it was asked by me, so he was not sold.
Second time.
Correct.
And I think the first time was January 30th, those two dates anyway.
It was on the January 17th.
17th, and then back again on the 30th, I would think. Has everyone read the reports? Yes, Matt.
Mr. President, would you entertain a motion to move it to the record, into the number 18-81, as well as 18-149, which are the two reports in question before you?
Looking for a motion to move those two reports into the record, 18-1, 18-149.
Some vote, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Lozier, seconded by Councilman Fonseca, and Counselor Solima, all those who favor the signifier by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair will tie, nay, hearing not seen.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lozier.
Detective, second floor, please, Paula?
Yes.
I'm not familiar with you, I apologize. Detective, when this operation took place, how many establishments did you totally review?
So you referred to incident number 81, the following establishment sold, which was a total of six establishments sold to us, a total of six did not, those were the businesses that we did check on the 18th.
So there were two different dates?
Yes, we don't do them all in one day.
So the January 17th, my understanding, and January 30th.
Correct. And then on January 30th, two businesses sold, and then a total of seven did not sell as well. And then we also did respond to three other businesses, one was out of business, and then two reported that they no longer sold any type of tobacco products.
Does this comprise all establishments in the city that have a license to sell tobacco?
Yeah.
Anyone else? Looking at the list briefly, I think they're all first-time offenders, except for Sunnyhill Market, I believe is the only repeat offender, I may be wrong, a male clerk, do we clarify that?
That is correct, Mr. President. Can I just reiterate that? 2016, Sunnyhill was in violation, they did cell phone minor, I do have the copy of the report.
You have that, so you have two, so you have one.
This is the third fact.
Detective, what is that report number?
This one's actually, gonna be 16-151301.
If I may interject, from a dossier issue in Central Falls, that would actually be three violations and two Matthew's probably.
Mr. President, would you entertain a motion to add that report to the record, and we have that number again?
It's gonna be 16-1513-11.
Again, looking, put that report into the record, 16-15-13-11, we have a motion by Councilwoman Fonseca, seconded by Councilman Lozier, all those who favor, enter me, add it to the record, signifier by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair will tie, nay, aye, have it, so introduce it to the record. There's a question?
Yes.
Maria?
So on the report from the 30th, it says, there were seven businesses, they had sell products, but they were available and visible.
That's correct.
Okay, so were they told, and another question is, some of the packets we sent today, how are they supposed to know that they're flavored if it's not on the label? Some of them will say vanilla flavored or strawberry, the ones that we sold today, most of them were not labeled, they don't have that they're flavored.
In the beginning of each report, it speaks to the, Ms. Verdi Carter and her team's attempt, they went to each of these stores with the packaging that does not have the label, and they told those retailers, this is still in violation, remove these from your shelves, so there was proper warning to each of these retailers, after that warning, they still kept them on their shelves.
I do have an extra copy as well, if you'd like to see.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lozier.
I'm reviewing this, that these do not have any designation, but someone from the task force did leave it them, I'm just curious if that is sufficient notification that a product does not meet requirements. I'm just concerned over those, they did not sell, but... They did not sell, but... I'm not sure of the legal classification that these are in violation. Anyway, I do have a question for the solicitor. Mr. Jurzick, we have a variety of all these individuals who were found in violation. Have they been cited? Have they been notified? Have they been requested to appear for show cause hearing for this meeting?
Yes, and I believe several of them are defendants. We're gonna take them one at a time, Mr. Mazir.
They all been notified? Thank you.
The icon?
Yeah.
The note doesn't say it on the packaging. It does write in the description, it says right here, "Believe the good old times with King's Blues cigars, classic blend of natural vanilla and premium binder," whatever that is. But it says right on there that the vanilla is, the flavor isn't a tobacco. It's just unfortunately, I guess maybe it could be a...
Yeah, and vanilla is specifically outlawed in the city.
Right. It just doesn't, unfortunately, it doesn't say it on the package, but they're more than aware when they purchase this that it's vanilla-based, vanilla-flavored.
Chief, give me a question. Just to make sure. You say that there's one of the distributor that have made, this is a violation, that tell time in two and a half years.
That was Sunny Hill Farms. They sold to a minor, and they've had two other times where we sold tobacco from them. All total, the violations in the minor, and the other two violations of selling flavored tobacco combined in the two and a half year period.
With that, is Sunny Hill Farm represented here tonight?
They are, sir.
The detective is ready for Sunny Hill Farm's testimony. He has met. He's already here. This is the repeat violator, Sunny Hill Farm. Is the representative here?
Yes.
Good evening.
Hey, good morning.
Could you please take your name and address for the record, please?
It's Lee Dong. Please, four decades, three.
And please raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, not about the truth, so it's all okay?
I do.
Thank you. Do you, have you received notice of violation?
I'm not aware of it. I got that letter for community, that's the first letter.
So the police department did undercover work at your establishment, and you were found to be selling flavored tobacco in violation of a civic city law?
I'm not aware of it. I don't know what time, if it's over there, in the morning time or afternoon time, I don't know.
In addition, it was selling to a minor?
Correct.
So you were selling tobacco products that are illegal in Son Falls, and you were selling illegal products to a minor. This one, this occurred on January seventeenth, and as well as January thirtieth. That would have been your second and your third violation of city laws. Previously, in two thousand and sixteen, you had sold to a minor. Do you have anything to say to these charges?
I don't know that they were... At that time, it's a worker there, somebody else there, and you get the names, and somebody else was there, because somehow they didn't really do a follow-up procedure. You know, they checked the ID before they sell any tobacco product. And if they were there, and we were checking, and we know who they are, it's very small, but if my workers there, sometimes they not follow the procedure. And then we have to go back, and then you have to know the name, the time, we can go back to camera, and we can go, you know, we have to train them again, or let the person go. In this case, you know, I was not there, unless they have a name, or who was there at that time.
So that place is your establishment? You the owner?
No, I just a partner.
You a partner, so you call on everyone's place? And you have made three violations in two and a half years, and you didn't realize anything about it? I mean, the police is doing a job, and they do a good job, letting the people know when they are making something that is illegal now, so you think, idea that you were doing that?
I understand what you're trying to tell me, but the point is, I would not do that, not get that violation. And then maybe my call were the same, maybe just get my workers.
You should know better that this is your business, and whatever happened in there, even though it's your employee, employee that is doing the hunting, you should take care of it.
Correct.
How can you, you haven't done anything?
Again, you know, like a worker, they, sometimes they not really follow the procedure, and then they, I don't know that person at that time. If I knew what's going on, I have to go back and really train the person, or let that person go. But they got, you know, the owner of, like me, you know, you shouldn't know that, I shouldn't do that. But this guy is a worker. I mean, the worker, they, sometimes they on the phone, or maybe they don't pay attention, or maybe they got, I don't know what it is, they just think they can get the person go, maybe they think that's random.
Frank, can you also? Canada?
Well, they have the date when that happened, so maybe you can go back and check your truck, who was working that day, and, you know?
Right, because I should get a letter saying, at this hour, this time, someone was there to sell under tobacco. Because I heard a story, every time you sell an underage, the police, or undercover, come and get the name right away, and then give you a ticket, that kind of thing. But I just, I'm aware of those situations.
Can I see the letter you got?
The letter, I didn't, I wouldn't, it's a letter, invite me for some late about life and things. Do any of you guys have the letter? See it?
Detective, did you take the names down?
We did not that day, typically, because we just sent an undercover officer in the year...
Detective, you mind being on our phone just a second?
Sorry about that. In two thousand and sixteen, when that was brought, fifteen dash thirteen oh-one, they did end up going in and getting the clerk's name that time.
But not the current?
No.
So maybe in the future, we can get the name, but the owner should also know who's working, right? You create the schedule?
Yes.
So you should know who you're working with, who you're hiring as well?
Correct.
And they should be following your policies, and clearly, you're not.
Yeah, that's the first thing. We have the same, we have to check the page before you, under, actually, under, over the one.
Right. But at the end of the day, you're the owner, so whatever happens in the establishment, you're responsible for.
Correct. I always, if they make mistakes, that kind of idea, we all let them go, or give a training again, usually, we have to let them go, because they cannot do that, it's a business.
Thank you, Councilman Acosta.
Just a question for the detective. Do you know the specific reason, or was it just randomized, that you went to two of the same locations from the first check, again, on the second? I only ask because, even though they failed their first observation on the seventeenth of their first setup, they didn't receive notices until the thirty-first. So they would have struggled to remediate the error from the seventeenth, without having known that they made it potentially, if like he didn't know that his staff had ever gotten called. It's still your fault, it's your responsibility. But, just to clarify.
May I speak then? Quickly, if I'm wrong, council, I believe the ordinance requires that if they obey some compliance checks, we require to go back a second since we hired you, as part of the ordinance.
The ordinance has a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine for the first offense, three-hundred-and-fifty dollars for second offense, subsequent offenses are five hundred dollars. Councilman Acosta's point, you could probably make an argument that this was a notice of violation of a second offense, because they were together, and they didn't receive the second notice and then a third notice. So from their perspective, it's a second notice. You can make an argument that they should be treated as such, or you can make the argument that on two distinct occasions, they broke the law, and it's a second and a third violation.
Right, that was my only fear, that they hadn't been notified of the second one before they got the third, or say, well, you know, to remediate.
Yeah, in addition, Colleen? The ordinance reads, all licenses shall be subject to compliance check at least two times a year. Violators shall be checked more frequently until two consecutive compliance checks are completed without violation. So because they violated, they're gonna check them more frequently.
Anyone else?
Please, a recommendation by the police department.
I believe the ordinance stipulates a fine depending on the violation, so I really don't have anything to interject when it comes to that, actually, a punitive action.
So I think one of the keys, though, is this is second or third. There's a big difference. Actually, I think if it's the third, we could take action further than just a fine, I think we want. So I think that's important, if we can determine whether it's second or third, Canada?
Yeah, I just want to be clear, in addition to the fine, we also have the discretion to suspend or revoke.
Correct, and that's why...
It's not tied to the final. So it doesn't have to be the third time to suspend. We could issue a second offense fine along with a determinative amount of time suspension.
Right. So, I'm, when you have any final words, other than you're going to talk to the people that worked there, or you have to correct us?
Of course, because usually, I, as I say, I'm not aware of these ways. You know, because in the morning time, a couple hours, most of the time, the owners, you know, we all, we're there all the time. It's just a couple hours in the morning. An afternoon, we have a worker there, and then if we know, we see the letter, anything to say that, hey, today, you got a ticket about the underage, we should right away correct them. It happened over and over, and this person not really paid attention to this.
So there's two distinct issues. There's selling underage, which is a violation of city law and state law, and then there's the flavored tobacco, which is a specific violation of city law. So, we, the city has set down notice of the flavored tobacco ban. You've had community outreach workers stop at your store to educate your workers or the owners about it. Do you know, standing here today, what in your store is currently illegal to be sold in Central Falls? Do you know what flavored tobacco is? Yes. Okay. So, as part of this conversation, are you saying you're gonna go back to your store and take those materials off the shelf?
Correct.
Okay.
Anyone else from the council? Franklin?
Yeah, and also, it's important, it's very important for you, as the owner of your place, that you establish a rule in your establishment, and your employee must know what is the rules are, in order for them to respect the rules, because you don't put any rules, you just come in and out, and you don't know what's going on. Your place, you're gonna get a tobacco. So, and we welcome business, and we like to maintain business in the city of Central Falls, but you have to respect the regulation that the city has.
In my mind, I'm thinking, the reason that person get caught on anything, because they think that's their friends, or somebody else, but even strangely, we ask for an ID, actually, I'd be assuming. But I have to go back, and we have to, again, know the time.
In the first instance, the undercover person was a police detective, so I don't think your employee thought a police detective was...
Right.
Unless I'm missing something.
Couple more questions. I have one, do you own any other establishments that sell tobacco? Is this the only one?
I have another store in Newport, in the South.
Newport, Africa? This is very important, because this is something that's gonna follow you around. You know, if something happens in the Tucker's store, somebody somehow, after questioning, will probably find out that it happened in your Central Falls store. So this is very important, number one, to your reputation, and as Franklin said, you have to, you have to do something where you work. And as Colleen said, the ownership's still on you, you own it. So whoever you hire, you better screen a little bit better. With that, Mr. Mazir?
Yes, there was a comment, there was a comment made that there are two violations, one, selling under age, and what was the age? The solicitor mentioned it was a violation of state law and city law. So, I know the city changed, dropped the age for me, raised it from eighteen to twenty-one. What was the age of the individual?
The minor was twenty years old, so...
He was twenty years old?
Yes.
So he complied with state law, but not city?
But not city. He never asked for an ID at all.
All right, city, state law is twenty, eighteen, correct?
City law, city.
City law.
City law, city.
Twenty-one is a city law, that's what matters here.
State law is eighteen. So he's a violation of the city ordinance, not the state. And the task force said that they went around to talk to the stores prior to the sting operation, whatever. Did they come and speak to you, or your co-owner?
From my understanding, Bernie Carter, who surrounded out there twice in the month of December, and also provided all the paper documentation to each and every...
Do they know who she talked to? Did you talk to anyone?
You'd have to follow Bernie, I'm not...
I was asking if you talked to one of the owners, or just could be the same person, I don't know.
Anyone else? Is there any motion? We have motion by Councilman Von Seker.
I move to fine Sunny Hill Establishment, second offense, three-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
We have motion on the floor to fine three-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Acosta. Any discussion? I just want to say, I think that's more than fair. Again, as Councilman Acosta said, we could also go a step further, and actually close your establishment for a day or two. Me personally, I think that's fair.
Even within the discussion, I still would like to entertain the possibility, with the rest of the council, of suspending your license for a certain time period under which they would not be able to sell tobacco, but they can still keep their store open. I don't think that's what we usually do.
Anyone else on the discussion? Yeah, we can manage a little bit.
We had to talk about time.
Historically, have we...
No, it's the first, it's the first more than one offense since we've changed the law. You want to make a amendment, Colleen? Or do you want to amend that motion?
That's a double kill. Mr. Chair? All right. I'm only concerned that, I realize you, they are in violation. They are in violation of the law that be created in Central Falls, a much stringent and stable. But that is what the law entails in Central Falls. My concern with the discussion presently is that you are looking to give them a fine of three-hundred-and-fifty dollars as a second offense and close them down. I mean, to me, that's an overkill. I'm concerned that what we're doing to businesses is, we want them to learn from their mistakes. We don't want to close them down. I'm concerned with we're being too just, and too, we're over-killing the problem. I think if there is another instance that this establishment comes up, then we look at severe action. But at this point, to suspend them and to close them, or fine them twice, two violations, I'm against that.
This is the kind of case, are you equivocating tobacco suspension, a license suspension with closing a store? It seems like a...
That was the option, suspending.
Right, that's not closing the store.
No, that's closing them for operation.
No, just, no. That's for selling tobacco.
They just cannot sell tobacco.
You're only suspending their tobacco sales.
That's what Ms. Acosta said.
All right, you didn't clarify that.
No, yeah, that's right.
If I wanted, my understanding, when you discussed it, was that he was the clerk who was suspending... My understanding when you discussed it was that he was the clerk who was suspending--
Tobacco.
No, just the tobacco--
Yes, tobacco.
Correct.
My question still arises the same. Do we need to do both? If we're going, then why are we fineing them? Do we want to penalize them, then hit them over the head again? If we want to suspend them, then suspend them. If we want to fine them, then fine them. If we think suspending them sends a stronger message, then close them down before their sale of tobacco licenses. I'm concerned that doing both--
So what do you prefer, given your line of reasoning? If you're concerned--
You have a motion on the floor. I don't... My--
I'm asking your opinion.
My opinion is that we do one or the other. We either fine them on a second violation, or we suspend them. Either one.
It's not a characteristic of the plan. I think we should come to a decision.
My understanding that Councilman Costa say is that he agree with the fine, and also probably proposing to having, let's say, one, two-day suspension, just to make sure that they really understand what's going on here. And for the understanding, the police are just not chasing anybody to punish anybody. The police are just doing the job that they have to do in the city. If they see something suspicious, they're going to investigate it. So it's very important, do you understand that? So--
So I just want to ask Councilman Lizard, because I do think it's a bit condescending to call twenty-year-old kids, so I don't think this is for kids. But, that said, do you believe that being a violation of two parts, of two separate parts of an ordinance, and being a violation of one of the same, because we're going to have to talk about the other license issues, right? And just selling flavored tobacco is one issue, and also selling the flavored tobacco to a minor now brings in two. So I think that carries a level of gravity that's probably greater than just doing one. And so I'm interested in kind of your perspective there, because I don't want us to set a precedent with one that we're then not following with the other ones. And we have two degrees in both situations. We have some people who just sold flavored, some people who sold flavored to minors, to what we established legally as minors, which again, both of us are in agreement with, but we got to enforce it.
We can only look at, we can only look at the case before us. As I stated, looking at this case solely, I do not agree with giving them a fine and also suspending them. I would suggest that we do one or the other. The other cases coming up, they'd have to be handled individually also. But this case, I... My personal feeling, as you asked me, is that I don't agree with taking both actions against them. That's my feeling.
Anyone else? Could you repeat the amendment, Jonathan? Colleen's amendment. Three hundred and fifty dollar fine. How many days suspending their tobacco license?
We hadn't talked about it.
I thought you had.
No.
Anyone, any suggestions for how many days should we decide to suspend the tobacco license? A month? A week? Franklin?
I would say the fine and two-day suspension.
Perhaps a weekend? Two days? Any two days? Doesn't matter. I guess sales are the same probably every day, probably. Anyone else?
You have to make that amendment.
You want to make that a form of your amendment, Colleen?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely. You're going to withdraw your--
I withdraw my motion.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to put a fine of three hundred and fifty dollars and two-day suspension.
Just tobacco only?
Tobacco only. And it will be two days, hopefully.
Maybe you don't understand where we at. I'm in stores surrounding a dollar store, basically nothing there to sell. The reason I stay there at a store, because it's a neighborhood store. People love to go there because it's neighborhood. But if you look at my store, there's no business there. I mean, it's basically dead. Because look at the dollar store that kills you, ten dollars next to you, and then one store, particularly, what do you want to open for? You sell tobacco, hopefully because nobody else sells tobacco around. And you tell me to suspend my... Don't sell tobacco, basically, you tell me to just close the door. Because what kind of business we have around now? Selling all the things? You have dollars front the street, ten dollars next door, and basically, you kill my business already.
Then you need to follow our laws.
Yeah, because I accept it, three hundred and fifty, so I go back and paying my worker. And you just spend it, and then you're telling me, hey, go ahead, close the store. So that's why you're telling me. I mean, I have no problem. Okay, hey, we learned our mistake? Okay, pay the fine, let's go forward. But you're suspending your store, as you say, try to... Basically, you want to run me out.
And we don't want that to happen, in fact. We don't want, but I mean--
I didn't know that I'm here for this thing. I thought I had something else, but now I realize, I did bring my... The owner's here, you know, because they speak for it. But now I speak for hers, I don't want to bring the bad news to her.
Your part, your part alone, the one--
But she owns the authority. I'm just here representing her. Because she thought, I thought the letter was about some late, whatever, the license, something--
Yeah, it was late, too.
Yeah, that's what I'm here for. That's the letter saying, yeah, nothing about tobacco. If she knew the tobacco, she would bring it here. And then now, I bring the bad news, I mean, I don't know. This is, I mean, it looks like... I mean, if they got the fine first time, hey, this is first fine, you do this, 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 you do it again, it's going to happen. We accept that. But now here, it's just like, hey, come on. What happens to you? Both, like that. We don't know.
We have city officials to watch and to inject a little bit here.
I would just add that I think this is a legitimate second offense, and that second offense per the ordinance does call for a fine and increased compliance checks, and that the suspension... My legal advice would be a suspension would be appropriate if we go out. Next time, he still has not taken the product off the shelves, his employee is still not following directions. That's a clear defiance of city laws, and that would be a very harsh and appropriate sentence at that point. And that, in this instance, it's a legitimate second offense with a stern warning, that would be my advice.
Thank you, Matt.
Yes, so I withdraw my motion, and as Colleen made it before, you want to keep that?
Can I ask the Colonel, for the thing?
The part of this that concerns me the most is that he keeps the fur and the blame to his clerks that work in the store, they're selling the flavored tobacco. They shouldn't be selling flavored tobacco, because there shouldn't be any flavored tobacco in the store to begin with. That's the part that concerns me. He's already been given the fine, all the flavored tobacco should have come off the shelves last time. We shouldn't even be here discussing this right now, if he was, in my opinion, trustworthy to comply with the request. So, but, and I also understand the situation here with hitting with the fine and with the closure, too, here, that you could potentially put a business out of business, and we don't want that, but we also don't want somebody that's not going to adhere to the laws prescribed in the city. So I just, my major concern is just trustworthy, just going forward.
Thank you. So we make part of this the three hundred and fifty dollar fine, and you immediately have to remove the flavored tobacco. Like tomorrow?
Tonight.
Tonight. I'll give it a chance.
Thank you.
That would be on top of Matt's suggestion. I certainly, regardless of where the Colonel's coming, or Franklin's coming, or where Colleen's coming from, but I think it'd be more than fair. Three hundred and fifty dollar fine, however, you have to remove the flavored tobacco.
I'll make the motion again.
Okay.
I move to impose the three hundred and fifty dollar second offense fine for Sunny Hill.
Second, as well, a motion? Second, we have a second.
And I agree with what the Colonel was saying about, you know, putting the blame on the clerks, because at the end of the day, it is your store, and you are responsible for people who work there, and what products are being sold. And I understand the business model, Navigant Credit Union holds monthly business meetings for all the business owners, to grow your business. It's located right on Broad Street, it's free. They open it every, it's on a Wednesday from six, eight o'clock, they have it every month. And that's a way that businesses can grow in the city. So I recommend that you attend those, because it's important for you to grow your business. No business is going to live on tobacco, off of tobacco. And so, all of this is really on the owners, you and the other owner. You know, you guys need to show who you're hiring, you guys have cameras in the store, you guys, that should be on you. And next time, if this does happen, we're not going to be so nice.
You know, want to add removal, immediate removal of the flavored tobacco?
It's very part of the law.
No, it's part of the law. Do it slightly.
Why can't you be aware that the--
He's aware.
Very aware. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Solano? Can you create the discussion? Here we have seen vocal vote.
Counselor--
Yes.
Counselor Costa?
Yes.
Counselor Figueroa?
Yes.
Counselor Fonseca?
Yes.
Counselor Lizard?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Solano?
Yes.
Motion, here, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you.
So the next business owner on the list, Mr. President, is ABC Liquor.
Can you please identify yourself for the record?
My name is Johnny Blocker, J.R. Angie.
And your address?
Three ninety-six, Detective Street.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you out?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Detective, do you want to just outline the charges against--
The thing, Detective Bolden responded there. He did respond to ABC Liquor located three ninety-one, Broad Street. At this time, an employee told the undercover jewell that he needed to be twenty-one years of age. There was the product visible behind the counter. On the first check, which was on the seventeenth, the employee did sell to the undercover detective.
So I'll ask the same question I asked the last business owner. Are you aware of the products that we're talking about?
Flavored one?
The flavored one.
Yes, I am aware of the flavored one that you're not supposed to sell. And we specifically ask, like, the supplier we sell off, like, we have a two to five coupling, and there's another one, like, I forgot the name of. We ask them, like, specifically, we don't want any flavored ones.
Right.
Because we, we know that we're not supposed to sell the flavored ones. And I mean, like, it's kind of like silly to jeopardize your license, or like, I mean, like, ten cents that you make off each packet, you know, like, it's--
So on January seventeenth, Detective Bolden from the Central Falls Police Department in Report eighteen dash eight one, went undercover, and you did not have the product on display, but your employee went into the back to get the product and then sold it to the undercover detective?
I'm pretty sure that we always carry that product. I think, yeah, I think it's called, it's called Blue Game, right? I think, what is it?
Carcia and Vega's Cigareo Blue, right?
Yeah, we have, we have that blue, like, since we got the license, got our cigarette license. So we always have that product. I think, I mean, I think we ran out in the front, so there's always a room, small room, for us to get cigarettes. I mean, not, not just the cigarette, even the, the extent of, like, this is stupid, ten of these--
So the Cigareo Blue is a vanilla-flavored tobacco product, and that does violate the city ordinance?
I, I'm, yeah, I was aware of that when I came here throughout the lockdown. And that was, like, nearly taking off the shelf. When I, I think it was on Monday, I think, probably. So we took everything off the shelf.
Any council members have any questions to the business owner?
Is this his first time?
Yes.
Will he just have the license? Not to mention someone--
Yes.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, due to the circumstances, is this a first offense? Make a motion that we give him a warning?
We have a motion to add to give the business owner a warning. Is there a second?
Second.
It was second by Councilman Solano. Any discussion? Councilman Costa?
So I will take a more case at a time. One thing I will say that is very frustrating for me, and for my seat, from both the business end and the LLC end, right, is that they can throw money at problems and just keep it moving. And I feel like that's the symbol that we're saying. And I understand that this board wants to present itself as being very business-friendly, but businesses is serve people and not the other way around. And so if we have a law that we don't agree with, and we're going to give warnings and change the ordinance, but if the ordinance says it's two hundred and fifty dollars for the same, for the first time, then follow the ordinance. Now, I'm agreeing with the ordinance to begin with, which is why I voted against it. But if you're going to pass it with the majority, then stop making exceptions. Make a choice. I disagree with having it just be a warning. And I disagree with the ordinance passing to begin with. But if that's what the majority wanted, then I have to follow the ordinances that were put on the books. So you guys got to make a choice.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I don't agree with that.
Mr. Chairman?
I do agree, we're a city of, we have laws, we're country laws, ordinances, be what they may, and I totally agree, it's on the books, we have to follow it. And absolutely right. All the ordinance that we passed, we passed for a reason. And there's a reason regarding tobacco also, we're trying to keep it out of the hands of our youth. And I totally agree, it's on the books, it's a law, we have to follow it. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Lizard.
As Councilman Costa mentioned, I did not support this law. I did not agree that we should be lowering the age of purchasing tobacco products--
Or raising--
Or raising the age, yeah, raising the age from eighteen, from eighteen to twenty-one. State law says eighteen. They can go hundreds of feet down the street to his store, and in many different stores do the same purchase. I think this is a new owner. I made the motion to provide, give this owner a warning, because I think it is within the discretion of the members of the council to consider the offense, the degree of the offense, and the, the actions that the owner takes to abide by and regulate the business for the future. Since this is in a first offense, since he is new, that's why I made the motion to give him a warning. We are taking action. The next offense would be more severe, because it is a second offense. This offense is still a first offense, we can't issue a warning. If he is caught again, then that'll be a second offense, and severe actions could be taken then.
All right, Mr. Lizard, we don't need a narrative, we're on the discussion.
Yes, I am.
You do know, when Mr. Lizard, the next four businesses before us will be in the same book, first offense. I just started to throw that out there, so.
Yeah.
They also will be a first offense, so keep that in mind while you're giving your narrative. Anyone else? You have a motion to take a roll call vote?
Counselor Ferri?
No.
Counselor Costa?
No.
Counselor Figueroa?
No.
Counselor Fonseca?
No.
Counselor Lizard?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
No.
Counselor Solano?
Yes.
Motion, Counselor Solano? Motion carries, President.
Do we have a further motion on the floor?
I don't...
I move to impose a hundred dollar fine for the first offense.
That motion by Councilman Acosta to impose a one hundred dollar fine.
I'll second that.
We have a second by Mr. Lozier. Under discussion.
I just want to... To come back to the point I made in the last conversation, which is, should it be a financial punishment, which the larger the business or LLC, the easier it'll be for them to get through it? Or should it be a more equitable suspension of the license? Which, if you're bigger, then the more money you have, the easier paying the fines. Whereas if it becomes a universal, you mess up with the license, you can't sell tobacco products for X number of days, that's equitable. Everyone faces the same punishment. I'm leaning personally more towards the side of the license suspension. Not revoking, well, none of these places only sell tobaccos, none, none of that places don't exist anymore. And so, I think it's, it's more fair for the playing field that we're on. And I'm sure our solicitor might have some business that I'm interested in.
I move a question.
I think if you find that a first offense has occurred, the city code of ordinances provides for a fine of two hundred fifty dollars for the first offense. And that unless you want to change the ordinance to give yourself more discretion in the amount, that it has to be one hundred.
So just a question, it can be a warning, which is not written in the ordinance? Or it has to be two hundred fifty, just to be clear?
If you wanted to impose a penalty, you could not find that it was an unofficial first offense and give them a warning.
So then I ask the board, is that what you want to do? Because I, I don't think we realized, when the motion was put on the table, that we'd essentially be nullifying this as a first offense, which would then prevent us from counting the next one as a second offense.
Well, it's obvious it is the first offense. It's also obvious that we have to follow the law, which is two hundred fifty dollars. Now, if you don't like for that, propose an amendment, next council meeting introduction, first passage, second passage, we'll vote on it. But again, I mean, it'd be hypocritical not to impose a law we have on the books, and it is a first offense, it's two hundred fifty dollars. Anything less than we violated our own charter. That's how I see it. Mr. Lozier?
Mr. Chairman, um, I've served on the liquor board many, many years and on the city council.
Mr. Lozier, get...
And, Mr. Chairman, I'm talking, please do not interrupt.
It's not a history lesson.
Mr. Chairman, I respect your comments when you have the floor. Please respect my comments when I have the floor.
Go ahead.
Do not interrupt. Now, as a member of this board, council, we have the discretion to take whatever action we deem necessary. I question the solicitor that it's an either/or. When you go to court, the judge has the parameters to take a variety of actions. I think as a licensing body, we have that discretion also. Because there is a violation, I question the legality of that we have to impose a three hundred fifty dollar fine or a two hundred fifty dollar fine and not impose another penalty prescribed by the, by the voting body. I raise that as a concern to the solicitor.
Anyone else?
I'm on the first, so we find first offense.
He signs the question, I make a motion to reconsider this a warning again?
There will be a one hundred discussion. Mr. Lozier, it's a hundred dollar discussion here.
Because I haven't rescinded the motion, can you ask me another question about the either/or scenario?
Mr. Solicitor, the, uh, my comments were that, as a licensing body, we have the discretion to impose a parameter of decisions.
Counselor, I hear your question. The legal opinion I'm rendering to the board is that is a little different than what I just said, because I just reread the statute. So, it says the board may impose a civil fine upon a finding of a first violation. It does not say the board shall impose a civil fine. Because of that important legal distinction, if you do find that a first offense did happen, you could either provide a fine, but the fine has to be in the amount of two hundred fifty dollars because that's what you chose to make as a matter of policy when you passed the ordinance. Or you could issue a warning for anything that's non-monetary related to that, because it uses the word "may."
Thank you. Anyone else? We have a motion of one hundred dollars fine on the board.
You can't draw the motion based on the legality.
Right, Mr. Figueroa?
Okay, um, I think we have to be careful when we, um, you know, do these kind of things because I know the first offense say two fifty. But, at this point, I think it's, we should just give them a warning and learn from our mistakes. We have to be careful when we, you know, put something, because we cannot amend that now because it's already done. So, we should, uh, just give them a warning, and if that happens again, go forward, but, you know.
At the end of the day, these are businesses, these are people's lives. We fine two hundred fifty dollars when somebody just overflows their trash bin in the city. You know, so we're really getting tied up over this two fifty, that's nothing. On Friday, Saturday night, they make a lot more than that, you know?
Okay, so that's what I'm saying, if we say two fifty, go for two fifty or a warning, but we have to be careful when we do something like that.
Yeah, we fasted, but my...
We have to keep our, you know...
I move to fine legacy liquors of two hundred fifty for the first offense.
Before, I just want to interject what you were saying. Thing is, you start giving warnings, that's one, then first offense. So, I, so, so they're getting more than just a warning. You've given them another shot. But as the law is written, I know we use the word "shall" or "may," two hundred fifty dollars. And then where do you draw a line between a warning and a fine? Now, we've got a couple more similar situations, maybe different, same thing. Where do we draw the line? The next person could get up and say, beg for a warning. You gotta draw the lines from there. And that's why, the word "warning," to me, is another, is, it's another chance, yeah, but it's also another violation. So keep that in mind also. Well, I'm sorry, your second, we have a motion by, uh, Counselor Conseca, second by Councilman Rivera, to fine the licensee two hundred fifty dollars for first offense. Anyone else? Right?
Uh, yes, President, I just would like to request the, maybe each one level and send it to every business owner in the city stating that if they make a violation of the rule of their, of Santa Falls, the punishment for the first violation will be two hundred fifty, fifty dollar period. Now, this action, and that way, we move forward with that.
Thank you. And moving forward, if any, any council, council person wishes to make an amendment to our ordinance regarding the sale of tobacco, go ahead and move forward. With that, roll call vote.
Counselor McFerrick?
Yes.
Counselor Macasa?
Yes.
Counselor Figueroa?
No.
Counselor Conseca?
Yes.
Counselor Jose?
No.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Solano?
Yes.
Motion carries, President.
Thank you. I believe you understand that. Thank you.
Next business is CF Mini Market.
And to you, Mr. Lozier.
Could you please identify yourselves for the record?
Ed Shapiro, CF Markets.
If you can, if you can take the microphone, please, I need to get...
You can take it out. The mic.
No, the microphone.
Thank you.
My name is Ed Shapiro, I represent CF Market.
You can pull the mic out.
My name is Ed Shapiro, I represent CF Market, good evening.
Detective, did you want to outline?
I just need an address.
Seven nine, one, I think, the mic.
This is you, Ed, and your report is law and tea, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, old man.
That's all.
Mr. Shapiro, is your client going to testify tonight?
Uh, no, I'd like actually a continuance, it's not, I'm asking for a continuance. Hold the mic, excuse me. Okay, here we go. I feel like that will cool it, but anyway. The, uh, I'm requesting a continuance because of the fact that my client started to sell in Gasha Vegas Cigarillo on Blue. He stated to me that at the time in this incident, he did not carry that product. So therefore, I don't know if the product, the evidence has been destroyed or still viable, where I can look at it before another, not a hearing, but another time before the council.
All the evidence was placed into property, so we should have a check with my detective who's in charge of the evidence locker room.
Mr. President, you, you do have the ability to grant the respondent the continuation to examine the evidence. So if they want to mount a defense, they have the ability to do that.
Absolutely, I have no objection. So, council members?
You make a motion to, uh, to decide, date with a number of dates.
Absolutely, we have a motion by Franklin. Second. Second by Counselor Lozier and Counselor Conseca to continue this to March twelve.
I assume I get in touch with prosecution or the detective herself?
I think she should give you a card. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
I will.
Thank you. Although the favor sign if I say I.
Aye.
Two votes aye, nay, hearing them, seeing them, aye, seven. Have a good night.
Dexter Street Market.
Um, I'm Tida. I represent the Dexter Market.
Could you state your full name and your address, please?
Tida Suriasen, it's eight seventy-four Dexter Street, San Francisco, nine zero twenty-eight six three. It's a Carlos Market, I believe, in the front.
Could you raise your right hand, please? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so I'll do that?
Yeah.
Thank you. Detective?
This incident also occurred with Detective Bolden undercover. He entered the establishment and he was sold the product.
Are you aware of the flavored tobacco products that we're discussing this evening?
So, I am aware that we're not supposed to sell flavored tobacco, which we did remove all of that. But I was not aware that the games, the blue ones, were flavored. Um, I never received the letter in regards to that. Um...
I also work there most of the time, my name's Hector. I think there's like a major communication flaw. We never, we heard that somebody has come to the store to talk about it, but my mom was there. She doesn't speak English, and, um, the other fellow on here, too, I don't think he understood really what was happening. I think you guys have really huge communication flaw in terms of, that's ridiculous how the game blue can't be sold by game green can or game orange or whatever the term is.
Well, the old expression goes ignorance of the law is not an excuse for breaking the law.
It's not ignorance.
Well, if you have flavored tobacco...
We were never told, um, rules.
Well, we have no responsibility to tell you. If you have flavored tobacco on your shelf, you're violating the law. It's your responsibility as a retail in the city to know that law and to follow that.
But in the, in the package, it doesn't say that it's flavored, or even when we get it from that supplier, they, we, they already know that we can sell flavored tobacco, and they still sell that to us.
We were here too during the ordinance, and we was never discussed that blues or certain tobacco product, I guess, or left that out. We also never knew too that we would be charged a hundred dollars for the tobacco, for the license, where I guess it would go towards enforcing the ordinance, which I read from the paper I got sent.
They passed around a blue package tonight, which I believe is this...
That was tonight, but we never knew anything about selling being blues.
Right, what I'm trying to say is that the Garcia and Vega cigareo blue, which they passed around, said the word vanilla on it, and we opened the package up and it reeked like vanilla.
I love smoke, and, um, like I said, we didn't notice prior to today. So you're trying to hold us liable without us knowing the information.
During that meeting that you attended, we discussed all of these facts. We mentioned the flavor, we mentioned a hundred dollar fine that you would pay, because you pay this tobacco fee every year, and those fees go to the police department to do the compliance checks. And that was why we invited the business owners to the meeting, so that we could get your input.
Yeah, and we were the only ones that spoke, kind of, I don't know how many, because most of them did not even know any.
I know, I remember.
I'm not sure if you know too, but, um, we're border three other cities, uh, Lincoln, Cumberland, and Pawtucket. Santa Paul is only like a mile long, and so, when people come in asking for Russian cream, we don't sell that, we can't sell flavored tobacco, they just walk down the street and they get into Pawtucket.
I'm, I hope to impose the two hundred fifty dollar first offense fine for Dexter Street slash following office.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Conseca to impose the minimum two hundred fifty dollar fine as part of the ordinance. Is there a second?
I don't know, both of them had to, um...
No seconds? No second? Motion dies?
I, I agree, right, so... You know that you can't sell flavored tobacco, but I also understand where they're coming from, because when they pass those packets, I looked at that blue packet front and back. It did not say flavor on anywhere on there. So, the distributors are probably, they're probably, because that's the second, second one that comes up here and says, they're telling the distributor not to sell them flavored tobacco, and they're sending it to them because it doesn't say vanilla or strawberry or blueberry, whatever other flavors there are. Because if they don't have, so if they don't have the packets in front of them at the store that show grape, blueberry, or vanilla, but they have these, obviously, they're trying to comply, but the distributor is not complying with them.
Man, it's not in terms of we aren't complying, it's just nobody knows. Because our distributor, we asked them, if we want Russian cream or any flavored cigarillo, they would say no, oh, you can't buy it here. So we never received anything that we didn't, you know, personally, so... In terms of we didn't know, we're trying to get held liable for that.
And it's...
I think the panel wants to...
May I, please? With all due respect, uh, Counselwoman Rivera, and I understand, you mentioned it a couple times, that it's true, it's not packaged, it does not say, you know, around there, but where, where, just the product, this flavored tobacco, where, where, I don't understand how the person is selling it.
selling it is not aware of that. It, it doesn't say on the package, and I'll mention it again, I want to be on record that absolutely it does not say anywhere on the package, but when this is ordered to the distributor, there's information about it, descriptions, that it comes with flavored, as you know. Like, I just find it, I believe that the person selling it is not aware of it, if we are.
Yeah. I also read the packet that we passed around, as part of it, I took a picture of it, I do have the picture front and back here, it doesn't say flavored, but it say Aji Aromatic Tobacco combined with our natural leaf wrapper. So, I mean, aromatic, something have some kind of aroma, it will have some kind of taste as well, but it doesn't say flavored in the package. So I understand the point that they say, but that's something we should know how to handle it.
How many?
Yeah, and when Virginia Carter went around with the youth groups, they also brought around that same package to all the businesses. So if, if the case is like communication, right, I've been on CF Market since I was five years old, I'm an owner, and if, if it's communication, then I would suggest you give the city clerks department, one person's capacity to manage this, that they can reach out to when these things are happening, and we'll do our due diligence to reach out to that one person. But at the end of the day, it's the owners, it's on the owner, whoever's working the store, to make sure that they're following the law. You know, we're trying to crack down on a lot of stuff in the city, and this is one of them.
We understand that, we don't want to infringe on the laws or anything, or sell flavored tobacco, we just didn't know, so I don't know how many times we gotta say this, you're kind of like, going, keep going around and around.
Like the city's laws have said, not knowing the law is not a reason to, you know.
Well, also, people come to our store, I don't know if the public knows this too, that they can't buy flavored tobacco, because almost like every day, I get at least one person come in, be like, oh, you guys don't have Russian cream, you guys don't have this, I don't know how many times I gotta say it, just we didn't know. And you said the lady came, another one was advocating for this, she did come to the store right after, a day or two after you guys passed the ordinance, but never to show us what we can't sell, we can.
If you want, we can do that too.
That's no problem, it's just getting fined for something we didn't know.
Anyone else?
I just want to know what the solvicius will say about making final decision.
Mr. Chairman, the solicitor is ready to speak.
I think the respondent makes an interesting point, I think there's, there's some complexity in this instance, because the packaging, which Councilman Solano and I just reviewed, does not have any indicative markings of what our ordinance speaks to as flavored tobacco, and that is probably a function of the tobacco companies getting smarter about how their, as more cities and towns and states are banning flavored tobacco, they're simply taking the words grape, strawberry, flavored off the packaging, so that they, you can make the argument you didn't know. And so, you know, there would be an argument that a respondent could be, can make that says the ordinance says don't sell flavored tobacco, and how are they supposed to know it's flavored tobacco, it doesn't say it's flavored tobacco unless they're opening every package and testing them. As this body does not have before it what the manufacturers are giving to them, what the suppliers are giving to them, you could maybe ask them for that information. The, on the other hand, these blues were specifically targeted by the Rhode Island Department of Health as a tobacco product that was deceptive, that it was flavored tobacco, it was not labeled as such, and it was taken around the city by our street outreach team and given to business owners that it's a deceptive product, and so you have both sides as you weigh that decision.
Thank you. Mr. Leal.
Mr. Chairman, I think we've discussed this, this location, other locations, I am of the same opinion, I did not support this ordinance, and initially, I do not agree with it, but it is on the books. At this point, for this establishment, I make a motion that we give them a warning.
Second. Grab a motion on the floor, and Mr. Lozare, to issue a warning, seconded by, I believe, Maria and Franklin, under discussion.
The last business owner said he wasn't aware either, so if we're gonna be fair, we have to be fair, just putting that out there. And I think that sets a bad tone, when somebody comes to us, say, oh, we didn't know, and then we're gonna give them a warning. So we just told the last business owner no, so we have to be fair.
But he also didn't say that he did not know that that was not a tobacco, a flavored tobacco product. That he knew that it was, but that the distributor kept giving it to him.
I just read online, when you buy it, it says the cigarillo blue will serenade your palate with sweet melon flavors and tantalizing favorite aroma. It's right on there.
It doesn't say a flavor. Aroma, it's just a scent. It's not a flavor.
Melon flavor?
I did post, I did offer it, but it was saying natural vanilla. I understand that, it's not on the package, I'm not disputing that, but my distributors, they should be knowing what they're buying from the distributor. If they're gonna be selling it, they need to know what they're selling. And right here on the box, what they're buying, it says natural vanilla.
And I think they are warned now that if they can't do that, and that's why I request a warning, and I think that, that's here is where.
Yeah, this one was the dead piece. So, the package that they present us doesn't say label, but the bags where they come, they say.
Yes, when they buy the boxes from the distributor, this is what the distributor, what's on the boxes, and when we print it out, we'll give you another copy of it. Highlight it here, it says natural vanilla.
So, the little package is not labeled, it's not labeled a single, but the back, the whole back itself, it say vanilla.
It says it in fine print, though, I'm pretty sure whenever we, we don't mean the meaning of the fine print will be, so you're kind of, you're trying to hold us liable by saying you should be given the fine print.
Yeah, you can.
Anyone else? The motion on the floor, men, first.
The motion on the floor is to give them a warning. It was being by Councilman Jose, and she was by Councilman Rivera.
Roll call, vote.
I'm sorry. See, even with the warning, this is again clarifying the conversation we had with the solicitor earlier, it means we are finding them guilty of a first offense, so that if this happens again, it's automatically three fifty, it's not, because you can't get a double one, there's no warning to begin with. And so this is a first offense, what you guys are doing is waving the feet, correct to this. It's a good point, Councilman, I think it'd be a more appropriate motion to say, to entertain a motion to find the market in violation of a first offense and in lieu of fines, to issue a warning.
I so amend my motion, Mr. Chairman. Is there a recommendation, something?
Do you understand recommendations, is there a section? There again, I'm just, I think he goes back to the same thing, warning, there we have first offense, and then what? Second offense is what? First one? First offense. That's all I have to say again. I, I think maybe, yeah, maybe our ordinance is vague, but at this point, we gotta act on what's on the book. It's like a catch in football, I guess, is it a catcher? But the fact is, the laws are on the book, and we have two other people following, we had a couple, four of us, and we ruled on that. And the way that the solicitors about being that's on the law also, and the print on the box that the detective mentioned, I, I think those are the other factors. So, yes, go ahead.
I'm just gonna reiterate, if this does get passed, I think we're being arbitrary in our decisions, so if the law says two fifty first offense, I think we should treat all business owners the same.
With that, any after discussion? Roll call, vote.
Councilman Perry?
No.
Councilman Acosta?
No.
Councilman Figueroa?
No.
Councilman Rivera?
No.
Councilman Solano?
Yes.
Motion carries, present. To find $250.
Motion by Councilman Fonseca to find the market $250, is there a second? Can I, can I step aside in a second?
I'm sorry.
Step back in a second, the motion.
Okay.
Is there a discussion on the floor? So, we backed ourselves into a corner, do you have a warning, or fine, or whatever. Are you ready for a vote? No, discussion, okay, vote for a vote.
Councilman Perry?
Yes.
Councilman Acosta?
Yes.
Councilman Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilman Fonseca?
Yes.
Councilman Jose?
No.
Councilman Rivera?
No.
Councilman Solano?
No.
Motion carries, present. To find $250. Next business is 711.
You can use the microphone and state your name and address, please.
My name is Parvez Khatana, I'll start it for you, it's not familiar name. P-A-R-V-E-Z, and my surname is Khatana, K-H-A-T-A-N-A. Address is 37 Power Street, Providence, Rhode Island, 02910.
Mr. Khatana, could you please raise your right hand? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guys?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Detective?
This is going to be the same incident that occurred on January 17th, 52nd open, enter the establishment, products were visible beyond the cash register and was available in the.
Do you have anything to say?
Yes, it was. The product was there, but when we received this summons, we took it off. I'm representative of Maduka Varshini, Dr. Varshini is from India, so in that sense, I'm a friend of his. There has already been a very long discussion about this cigarette of Garcia Vega blue. In Providence, Rhode Island, there is a wholesaler named Coffin Tobacco. that are in Providence or in Central Falls. And they only carry, they only sell us those items that are allowed in these cities. So, once again, about that cigarette, blue cigarette, by the way, my English is not perfect, it's my fourth language. I have, there has been a discussion about communications also, I have an ordinance from City of Providence. There, the items that are not allowed, they're sent to all the businesses, forty copies of that, or twenty liters of that. Here, we did not get it. If we had got it, we would have taken them off these shelves. Doesn't got, mean that this is going to run my store down, certainly not. People will buy something else. But, this is still a issue about Garcia Vega, because there's another brand, which is same color, blue color, doesn't say any flavors, and which leads all of Central Falls. There's Dutch Masters, Dutch Masters cigar or cigarette or something like that. So, why this particular with this name, name cigarette of blue? You have already fined people $250, so I think I would also be fined $250.
Actually, it's got to be $240, huh? It's got to be $240, huh?
Maybe I'm a 70 years old, I have to.
I 248. So, I think, for your honesty, thank you for your honesty.
I have two businesses, one in Benson, it's a, we sell all the flavors, there's no restriction. One is Providence, we do not sell any food, food flavored, but we sell Garcia Vega, gay cigarette or blue. Blue, green, blue, green, gold, accept. And right, of course.
Chairman, question?
Not just a comment.
Sure.
So, I appreciate your, your candor, and you being here, and so forthcoming. That said, I, I do think you're right, and this is something we talked about when we were discussing the ordinance to begin with, in terms of communication with public, and I think the other gentleman had to write in, he didn't understand what the word ignorance meant, so that was a little bit weird, and I didn't feel like engaging with him, but the reality is that there are some people who do not, it's just not known.
I know about ignorance, ignorance of law, because I've been prosecuted in England.
Right. I'm sorry, I get it.
Sorry.
But, but my point was more that, you know, to the letter you showed us from Providence, you know, we're relying on a task force that in some ways represents the city, but isn't the city to communicate an ordinance, and I think that's problematic. So in that case, in that, in that respect, I do stand with the, with the business owners and saying, you know, it should be the city communicating, and not, you know, a subsidiary or someone who's kind of related to the city and working with a grant from the Department of Health. I think that's much more official, and I understand why you're interested, so I appreciate it. The second thing, we're gonna get back to talking about this ordinance, I think, after today's controversy, is that this is about cutting down on tobacco, and something no one talked about, no one's using this to smoke tobacco. This is for smoking weed. And having it be a flavor or not, is not gonna change what goes in it, all right? No one is using this to smoke tobacco, people are using it to smoke weed. If you don't know about the subculture, then, you know, inform yourself.